Our meeting has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission as everyone is present. We are calling this meeting to order, and I will ask everyone to please stand as Mayor Pro Tem Renee Perez leads us in the invocation.
Gracious Lord, as we come together for this city commission meeting, we humbly ask for your presence and guidance. Grant us the strength to lead with integrity, the wisdom to make sound decisions, and the compassion to consider the needs of all those we serve. May our discussions be fruitful, our actions just, and our outcomes beneficial to our entire community. We offer this prayer in hope of a brighter future for our city. Amen.
I'll pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. And Mark, if you could read the conflict of interest, please?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
Yes, 10M.
None.
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 All right, moving on to announcements.
Okay, item number three, announcement. With respect to items that listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employer community recognition. Three A, mayor's announcement.
Don't have many announcements. I do want to invite everyone out to the Harlingen Animal Shelter on Sunday. They are going to be having an event, an adoption event, and also giving out free Easter baskets and candy and fun stuff for the kids. And I also, I don't see Javier here, but I want to congratulate Javier Segura over at the Harlingen Convention Center and his entire staff for an amazing job that that team does. They were awarded, I believe it was the best customer service award. It's under the, I don't recall BD, what is it? I don't know exactly the name of the managing company, but for all of the Hiltons. BC, BCland, there we go. Out of all of the Hiltons, ours here in the city of Harlingen was chosen and given the number one spot, and so we want to congratulate them. And I think this is the second year in a row, so they're doing a great job. I encourage everybody to visit the Hilton Convention Center, Hilton Garden Inn. That's all I have.
City manager's announcements?
Couple things. We're going to be having, opening a business session this Saturday at the Moon Rock from nine to 12. Anyone that's interested in opening up a business in Harlingen, make sure to attend, and you can learn what you need to do to open up a business. Also, city hall will be closed on Friday, March 29th, for Good Friday. That's all I have.
Commissioners, members, announcements?
Just real quick, want to thank Public Works and Co-Compliance for assisting at the community-wide, at the District One community cleanup we did last Saturday, and thank everybody that participated and brought us your trash. Well done.
Item number four, presentation of awards.
Amanda.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Sorry.
Moving on down the line.
Do you have anything?
I do. I want to give, there's a, there's two Harlingen Collegiate High robotic teams that left Harlingen today. They're heading to Belton, Texas to compete in the state tournament. And I just, on behalf of the commission and the mayor, I wanted to go ahead and congratulate, you know, wish them the best of luck. And they are the, the two teams are the Deceptibots and the Encrypted Robotic Team. So again, just a shout out from the city commission and wishing them good luck and to kick some butt for Harlingen. Thank you.
Ready? Okay. Item number four, presentation of awards. A Mayor's Business of the Month, Cafe 406.
Christina?
Hello, good evening, mayor, commission, city management. It's always an honor to begin our city commission meetings by celebrating local entrepreneurs and local businesses. Today, we have the pleasure of having one such individual in our audience who is being honored by the mayor and commission as Business of the Month. This initiative is all about supporting our local businesses and bringing them into the spotlight. This month's special recognition is going to Cafe 406. Before the award is presented, though, we do have a little treat for you all, a video produced by the communications and media department about the mayor's business of the month.
My name is Erica Shaw. I'm the owner of Cafe 406. Cafe 406 first just started with coffee and cookies, but now we have a full menu. We have flatbread pizzas, panini sandwiches, mac and cheese, and I like to do specials as well, so it's always changing, and I love to take suggestions and do things that you don't normally would see here in Harlingen. I've learned that the Harlingen community is amazing. A lot of other small businesses have helped me out and vice versa, getting the word out about the cafe. And I like to invite local artists to display their artwork here as well, so I just try to be really involved in the community. And future plans, I would say I would love to open a full-service restaurant because right now we're just kind of like takeout drinks and food, but I would love to have a full restaurant one day. Our address is 406 East Harrison, thus Cafe 406. And I would like to give a special thank you to the mayor for selecting me and all the other small businesses that have been really supportive to me, especially after the break-in that had happened here. So I just want to thank everyone in the community that's been helping me get all of this together.
So if you haven't visited yet, doesn't that video make you want to go have a nice beverage maybe after this as well? So we're thrilled to announce the recipient of this month's Business of the Month. The award recipient today is Erica Shaw. Erica, can you please stand and remain standing to be recognized? Can we have a round of applause for Erica? She is the owner of Cafe 406. So she is the heart and soul behind the charming cafe right here on East Harrison Avenue in Harlingen. Just a few months ago, actually in November, she opened, she turned her dream into reality by opening Cafe 406, a place where every item tells a story of dedication and love. From the savory breakfast bagels to the paninis that you saw in that video, and the handcrafted lattes, there's even a lavender latte, and I love lavender, so every bite or sip takes you on a journey of a culinary delight. Her story is just not about starting a business, it's about her passion for baking and creating a place that brings our community together. And for those who haven't been there yet or don't have the time to go, they actually, you can order on DoorDash too. So I'll be ordering that and delivering it here to city hall. So let's give Erica a warm round of applause as we welcome her up to the podium to share a few words.
Thank you very much. I'm Erica Shaw, owner of Cafe 406. I'm very honored to receive this award. I want to thank the mayor for thinking of me for this. Opening the cafe has been a dream come true, and I am very grateful for everyone in the Harlingen community that's been so supportive. A big thank you to my staff and also my small business friends, Kelly and Carly from KK's Closet, Liza from Home Sweet Harlingen, Lisa with Explore Harlingen. I have neighbors, Ella Plant, Laura and Misty, Terry at Atlas Tax and Soleimani, my friends on the Junior League, and all of my friends from the Chamber. So I just want to thank everybody. Blessed that God has led me on the path to Harlingen, and I'm grateful to be here, and I just thank everyone so much.
Well, Erica, we think you're incredible, and I love your little shop there, and now that it's, it's, it's growing into provide lunch, I haven't had that yet, so I'll make sure to stop by. And we are going to be doing the coffee with the mayor at, at your shop, and so we're going to invite everybody out there, and Christina will be sharing that with the community. I know that District Two, Daniel has gone a couple of times. I don't know if you have a few words for, for Erica?
That's my son's favorite place to go for cookies. He loves it. And so, and I've got cookies for the Chamber, and they all loved it, so keep up the great work. Your food's fantastic, everything you do is great. And whatever we all can do as a community, we'll try to do to support you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And so if the commission can join me for a picture with Erica.
I love it. Am I cramping up?
Ready? One, two, and three, one more. One, two, and three, go.
Can we change? You're next to Erica?
I was gonna. Okay. Ready? One, two, and three, one more. One, two, and three.
That was all you. Okay. Next on our agenda is citizen communication, and we do have a few people signed up for citizen communication. It was unclear if some of these are for a public hearing or wanted to, to speak on citizen communication, so I'm going to give you that option. First, we have Victor Liall, Mr. Liall, public hearing, okay?
Excuse me one second. Mr. Benya, I know you'd wanted to talk. You can speak at the public hearing, you didn't need to sign up for that.
You do need to sign up.
For the public hearing?
But we will get you to speak, yes.
Yeah, he didn't.
Yes, I think. Well, welcome. I know, I was trying to find you, and Ms. Amanda let us know, and we really try to be sticklers for the rules, but I know this is your first time, and we want you to have a good experience, and so you want to sign up, you want to be in the public hearing, is that correct? For...
Which one? Did you want to do the car wash, or did you want to do public, just overall general comments?
Okay, so we'll put you at that public hearing with Mr. Liall. Perfect, okay. Mr., yes, sir. And then we have...
We have Ron.
Riley, I got it, Riley Garza? Riley Garza? Okay. Ron Lozano?
He's on the door with his phone.
He's on the phone? Mr. Lozano, did you want to speak in the public hearing or in citizen communication? Okay. Don Ray Leonard? Okay, thank you. And Frank Lozano? Okay. Robbie Cruz? Robbie Cruz? Okay. So it looks like we don't have any citizen communication, we'll reserve those for the public hearing, and we will call out Riley Garza's name at that time, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so the next item is approval of the minutes, item number six, special meeting of February 29th, 2024, and special meeting of March 4th, 2024.
I mean, just two minor typographical changes, and so I would make a motion approved subject to those two, or three typographical changes.
You gave those to man?
Correct.
Okay.
Nice second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
Item number seven, consent agendas. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business. Were included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item, these items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commissioner member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda.
Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Wait, I had, go ahead.
Something to remove, Commissioner?
Yes, the item number G.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda, all items aside from G?
Motion.
Second, Mr. Morales's motion.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries? And...
Item number G is consideration of possible action to approve the installation of speed humps at the following location. This item was requested by Commissioner Daniel N. Lopez and Commissioner Frank Morales. The streets are Little Creek Street, 800 Block of West Buchanan, Adams Street, P, Q, and R Streets, North Atlas Palmas Road from the Expressway to Gannon Street, and six along Lake Shore Drive between east of Lake Shore Drive to Prosperity Drive.
All I wanted to do was to add another street to that. I got a request for a speed hump on Beckham Road from King Sago to Expressway 83. Make a motion to approve?
I don't have anything to add, but I do request that I get a status report on previously submitted ones, whether or not they are legit, didn't meet the criteria, but I got a lot hanging out there that people ask me about that I need.
Ditto to what Ford Kinsley said.
And just for the, for those that are tuning in at home, and for those of, that are here with us today, there is a process that we go through when the requests are made. We don't just go out there and lay the speed humps. Our Public Works Department goes out to make sure that there is in fact a, a need for it and does a whole study. And commissioners, you're requesting some feedback on whether those were approved or not, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. And so there was a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries?
Number eight, staff reports and other discussions. Item in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission or are generally for information only. However, items, item listed in this section may become an action item with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commissioner members or the city manager. A, city manager's report?
I don't have anything to report.
B, staff report, Health Department, discussion of two programs to implement at the city of Harlingen Animal Shelter facility.
On this item, in case the commission decides to pursue the, the programs that the Health Department is recommending, there is an action item that we can take action on later tonight, otherwise we can just pass.
Good evening, mayor and commission. These two items, one is for rescue organization application, basically reviewing the requirements that we will be requiring of rescue organizations who want to pull animals from the animal shelter. We want to do our best to ensure that they are nonprofits, that they are reputable, that, you know, the animals are going to be cared for, and that's basically what this document does. The second document is a foster agreement. We also want to work with citizens to try to foster animals. We've, we've had a lot of interest in this, a lot of people calling, requesting to assist us in helping to foster animals, get them out of that shelter setting, and help work with them in a home setting, and we feel like that would be very beneficial to the animals as well. We have, in the past, known that a lot of times it's something that's called a foster failure. Somebody takes a foster into their home and they wind up adopting it, which we're perfectly happy with as well. But that's what both of these documents basically review with you. They talk about the requirements that, that would be required of a foster or of a rescue, because again, we do want to make sure that these animals and do our due diligence in making sure the animals are taken care of. So that's basically what these two documents cover.
Awesome. And we do have those later on, on the agenda. Is there any questions on the foster program or rescue program for Shannon?
The one question I had is when you go to the second to last page or third to last page, talk about training.
The foster?
Yes, ma'am. It's under fost, it's regarding foster dog socialization and training, that paragraph?
Yes.
When we, or the organization fosters out these animals, are they going to be giving the fosterer any like literature on training?
We will be gathering some to give some. A lot of it's going to be a one-on-one basis, depending on what that foster's experience is, what kind of animal they're, you know, taking into foster, questions they have. There, there's going to be a meeting with each individual foster. Again, we, we don't want to set anybody up for failure, whether it's the animal, whether it's the person, we want as much success as possible, and so every animal is going to need different things, and that's something we will review with them at that time based on that animal, but we will have literature to hand out as well.
So in the same line on that, we say they must adhere to all state and local animal laws, so I'm assuming an awareness that state laws will be handled at that same time.
Yes, we will review that with them as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the veterinary care, it says foster animals should not be taken to any veterinarian unless authorized by Harlingen Animal Shelter in advance. Is the city paying for the veterinarian?
More than likely that would be the case, and, and we want to be able to review that and know that ahead of time on what is needed. And it depends, we are working with Dr. Kellogg, who's working with us a great deal, but if it's not something, since he's not in a clinic himself and it needs to go into an actual vet clinic, then we want to be able to work with the foster on that.
But Dr. Kellogg would have seen the animal before he goes to the foster?
Yes, yes. But different things can happen while it's in the home, and, and so if it's something minor, then maybe it waits till the next day and, and it can go back and see Dr. Kellogg, or if it's something major and needs to be seen right away, then we would tell them, we would refer them to which vet we're working with.
And how long is a foster program to be?
It's generally a two-week to a month period of time, but again, it can vary depending on the individual, depending on the animal. We also want our fosters to be coming to events that we attend, trying to adopt those animals out, again, unless they're interested in adopting the animal themselves. And that has happened.
In reference to your 501(c) animal rescue organizational application, application instructions, why are, why are you asking for a copy of the IRS paperwork? Couldn't you just verify on the, what is it, the Secretary of State website and see if they are a 501(c)(3)?
That would be an option?
Well, I think the 501(c)(3) comes for the IRS, so that's why they asked for that.
Those are standard forms, and most of them are online, but I think it's, it, they may not have the most recent year, I think. It's maybe a year or, a year or two off on the IRS page. But we want to make sure that the rescues that you're working with are nonprofits and registered and vetted, and this is part of that process, is that right?
Correct.
And I'll just add, I did, I was lucky enough and I adopted goose out of, out of the shelter, and I worked with a train, yes.
I just got the reference, Maverick and Goose.
Well, Eric is really upset about that because he's, we'll talk about that another time. That wasn't where Maverick got his name, but nonetheless, we've got Maverick Goose and Gunner. But I worked with Derek, and he said he'd love to work with the shelter in being able to help and provide training, so for, for those that are adopting, but potentially for fosters too. So when we're talking about that training, potentially he can come in and he can do group trainings, and then he can do one-on-one, and he's, he's great. I'd recommend following up with him to see, to work on that.
That would be great.
All right, any other questions for Shannon? All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item eight, C, South Texas Emergency Care Foundation, a quarterly report.
Awesome, our friends from staff.
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. Renee Perez, the original Renee Perez. I'm a little older than you, Renee. I wanted to go over our quarterly reports. This will reflect, this is the 20, the last quarter of 2023, just kind of go over some numbers. I know you have the report in front of you, so I don't want to be too redundant on that, but some of the things that, that have occurred and just kind of go over that. As you know, community health paramedicine has been one of our new programs that we started up right around the COVID timeframe, so really has taken off. We were very concerned initially because, you know, the, the program is about sustainability, right? Trying to keep the program going. And so we're able to secure an agreement with one of the major healthcare service plans to continue seeing their patients, so we're getting reimbursements from that, and that's helps in keeping the program alive and kicking. So currently, from February to, from October 2023 to February 2024, we saw approximately 21 patients at 270 visits. These patients are folks that are repetitive 911 callers and that kind of thing, and really what we want to focus in on is how do we, how do we utilize our CHP program to help or reduce that number on the 911 side? So we have been very successful on that, and actually, we're with a reduction of about 51% of the, of the patients calling 911 from the time, from the prior times that we've been using the program. So we're seeing a nice reduction on that, and it's really important from that sense because we have patients that now, instead of calling 911, they'll say, well, I really don't feel that bad, but I don't feel that good either. You think community paramedicine comes, check me out, and then instead of sending an ambulance, we can send a CHP vehicle, one of the medics will go and assess the patient. If the patient needs to go to the hospital, then we transport the patient to the hospital, but if we are able to do something there, some treatments and what have you, then we can keep the patient there. So the program's been very successful, and I think going forward, you know, we just try to continue utilizing it to the best of our abilities to keep that program, one, going, and two, utilizing it to help offset some of those 911 calls that were repetitive patients that we continually see in helping reduce some of those numbers. The program has been really busy. We, over the Christmas holidays, we did raise about, we received about 250 toys, and we gifted those to the Valley Baptist and the Harnes and Medical Center Pediatric Units, as well as some of our patients that we pick up in the ambulance and stuff. So we had, on, on that Christmas, we were gifting out any kind of pediatric patient that we would introduce into the ambulance, we would also gift them a toy and what have you, just kind of make it a little easier for them and stuff. So the program has been, this is our second year with that, and it's been very successful. And again, we continue to do that, and hospitals are great in the sense that we have kids in there that sometimes don't get sub gifts, but we really inundated them with, with presents this year. We did the Save a Life, and I really want to thank, you know, the mayor and Commissioner Kinsley were there, and they helped us kick off the event. We wanted to invite the community to come out and really work on our education, on the health education of some of these folks, on how to administer Narcan. Of course, we had an epidemic a couple of months ago with some fentanyl overdoses. Not to say that that's gone away, we're still seeing some of that, but, but not as, as, the numbers has been as high as they were before, right? We're also, we're teaching folks how to do the stop the bleed, we were teaching CPR, and of course, the active shooter response that HPD did, and Harnes and Fire Department as well did, helped us out with the CPR. And that was a, in our eyes, was very successful. We also want to thank Javier at the, at, at the convention center because he was very willing to allow us to use the facility. I think the venue was great, and pairing that with the, with the marathon, we did very well in receiving some of those folks and what have you. One of the new projects that we're currently working on is receive the grant from the Raoul Tijana Foundation, and this is our car seat initiative. So basically, we're going to be educating... So basically, we're going to be educating families on the use of the car seats, and in turn, they, once they receive the training, they'll receive car seat, car seat at no cost to them. And again, the whole thing here is to help our, our children, and sometimes every once in a while, you look at a car and you see kids running around or jumping up and down, and that's very unsafe. And we see, unfortunately, personally, I've seen many kids die from not being secured in, in these type of car seats, being ejected from vehicles and what have you, so it's very traumatic, and it, and it'll ruin a family. But a lot of that is, is stuff that we can stop. And again, by adding this part of the program is going to help us educate the community on really keeping our kids safe out there. A quick report on our, on our Valley Aircare and our long-distance transports, as you know, we, we also fly fixed wings as well. We have an aircraft based at McAllen, and we fly that aircraft however we need to. In our fourth quarter of 2023, we had 11 transports. Understand that fixed wing transports are usually the critical, the most critical patients, we need to get them quickly from one place to another, heart transplants, liver and lung transplants, so those type of patients are very unstable and very critical, and time is definitely of the essence. So we want to make sure we get those transported accordingly, and we've done a really good job of, of moving those patients. Our long-distance transports, again, those are ground transports going to San Antonio, Houston, Corpus Christi, and what have you. And our numbers typically run around that, and I'll say this, for this quarter coming up, our numbers are, I believe, are going to be a bit higher than that. One of the things that we need to understand, and I think as, as a city in general, if you're a parent, a lot of the kids that we're seeing nowadays that are sick, really sick, are having to be moved out of the area, okay? So the majority of the patients that we're moving out are, are kids, right, pediatrics, either going to Corpus Christi, Texas Children in Houston, or in San Antonio, Methodist, or Santa Rosa Children's in San Antonio. So we're seeing that population kind of getting moved out. So when we move a patient like that, we move a family. So it's not just the patient going to another hospital, but we're moving a whole family, and it's, it can be very uncomfortable and inconvenient for a lot of people. So, you know, with, with, with that information going forward, we really need to be cognizant of our healthcare in our, in our region, and that's not only here in Harlingen, but in the whole Rio Grande Valley. We have an issue with pediatric care, and we need to address that. So you're working closely with our Toronto Regional Advisory Councils, as well as our other RACs in the state, to try to see what we can do about improving pediatric care. Our grant transports, again, a lot of the information is on your reports, I'm, I'm not going to kind of beat you up on too much of that, but just kind of go over the numbers. Our total responses for that same period was 4,595, with total emergency responses at 2732, non-emergencies were at 1,863. Those, again, those vary, and one of the things that I want to make sure you understand is, some of those, particularly those emergency responses, our CHP program can affect those numbers by, you know, instead of that repetitive caller, we can go in and take care of them from a, on non-emergency, we can send a medic in and take care of those patients. So that program's, again, been really effective in that, and I hope it can drop the numbers down a little bit, I guess the less number of emergency responses, the better, but it just, it just depends on the time and the season. Today's been a busy day, it's been raining, and we had fires to car accidents and what have you, and of course, just cool out there, so we got a lot of sick people. One thing to add, we did add a, a new ambulance to the fleet, and 724 is pictured there, that, that's going to add on to our, our, our basic life support capabilities, right, so get more of those transfers out. And we also replaced two ambulances, so went from, the old chassis is replaced to the, into, to a new chassis on, on the same box, and then currently, we have one ambulance being remounted right now. So in, in total, we'll have four ambulances that we're adding on as new. So that, and that's a, a big thing, in the sense that we have to continually update our fleet, because COVID really did a, a damage for us, because there was a lot of stuff that's still, and still backordered, and a lot of parts and what have you. So a lot of the ambulances went from the almost 40% increases in, in ambulances and, and the cost of them, so it's, it's become a little crazy on that side. I wanted to go over the nature of calls, because I, I'd like to present this to you later on as well, because I want to continue looking at that. For, for whatever reason, anywhere you go in the world, fall, back injuries are the number one cause of trauma in, in any organization. We're particularly really strong here in Harlingen, I think the gravity here in Harlingen is, has something to do with that. But we do see a lot of falls, and unfortunately, we have a lot of people that are on blood thinners, so they fall down, hit their head, and now it becomes a head injury, right? So, and it can be, and it can be very serious. So we're, we're, those are things that we're currently working with, traffic accidents, breathing, chest pain, convulsions, as you see the numbers there. We, I talked to you a little bit about overdoses, we still continue to see overdoses, we're typically seeing, within every quarter, we're seeing about 34 to 38 overdoses going on in our community. So those numbers are still remain on the higher side, right? But we, we need to continue to educate our population about that. One of the things, and the reason I put, many of these are preventable deaths and injuries, a lot of this stuff, I want to commend you for all the, all the programs that you have put together to help people exercise, get outside, and that's all important. When we have, you know, when we talk about the breathing problems and chest pain, a lot of that, it has to do about your health, preventive care, right? And so it's really important for folks to understand that they need to get out, you know, that, that farmer's market is a really good thing, I, I wish we had it a couple of more extra days, and really go out there and, and educate the community about a better lifestyle, and that would hopefully reduce some of that. We do see a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of cardiac arrests due to just coronary artery disease that we see. Hospital diversions and cautions for the fourth quarter, we had, so understand, in that whole quarter, it was roughly about 2,992 hours, I think, within that period. So hospitals in our area were on diversion for 1,283 hours in that timeframe. So probably about a 40-plus percent of the time, they were on either diversion or caution. Why? Well, because they're full, or staffing, right? So one of the things we have to understand is, one of the biggest issues that we're currently seeing is, we have patients that use the hospital as their primary care. In other words, they get sick, I have a cold today, I'm not going to go see my doctor because I don't have one, I'm going to go to the hospital. And so 911 gets activated, patient gets transported, and we can't deny the transport, so then, you know, they go to the hospital. So we, we see a lot of these type of patients in the ERs, and that is causing that congestion in the ERs. And the problem with that is, if you have a real emergency, you have, you know, those delays. So on our side, we always monitor wall times. Wall times is the times that we arrive on at the hospital and have to wait for a bed. In that, in that period, we're at 44 minutes. Last, about two weeks ago, I had a nine-hour wait. We had to sit there and wait nine hours to get a bed for, for that patient. So it's not getting better, I think COVID came in and, and just, just really knocked us on, on our, our behind from that standpoint, because the wall times went up really high, and we're, they're getting better, but occasionally, our ERs are just so saturated. One of the big problems is, we lack primary care doctors. There's a lot of doctors that just decided, I don't want to do this anymore, or I'm going to go work in the hospital, and so people can't go to the, the ER, to the, to their doctors anymore, because they're not there anymore. So we have to be, we have to look at that, and again, that affects our city as, in general, because that affects the well-being of our citizens. That's it. I don't want to go too much in debt, I know that a lot of the information is in front of you there, but if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain anything.
Can I ask you a quick one?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the, the continuance of the overdose situation.
Sir.
What rough percentage, school age involvement?
Yeah, we're seeing, you're primarily seeing from the ages of 18 to 25, that you're seeing that population, it's probably the higher population that we're seeing. So. Thank you.
Renee, you mentioned a, did I hear that right, nine hours waiting?
Wait time, mm-hmm.
And, and so I know that's a, is that an isolated incident?
That was an isolated incident, but we're seeing, you know, weekends, night times, you do have extended wait times. Sometimes you'll see two-hour waits, and you'll have that nine-hour pop-up every once in a while, or eight hours or seven hours. But, you know, we, we try to work with the hospitals on that, and so we can free up those ambulances, because you got to go to other calls. So it just, unfortunately, is just the, the, the way the, the staffing in the hospitals are currently right now, there's definitely a shortage of nurses and doctors, so that's what's causing a lot of the issues.
And so this is at both, both of our hospitals?
Yeah, we're, we're experiencing that in both hospitals, so it's not, not to say it's one particular hospital, but we are seeing, definitely seeing that wall time definitely on the higher side.
On that aircare wing flights?
Yes, sir.
I know you only have 11, and you keep your, your plane in McAllen, correct?
Yes.
Do you share that with somebody else?
We lease aircraft with McCurry Aviation, so they have a dedicated air ambulance that we do live on.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a way that you can send, I don't know if the, the rest of the commission, but myself, I'd like to see what those wait, like what the average wait time is, just so that we know for...
44 minutes.
No, that, for ambulances, waiting to, for...
We can update you, we can give you an updated...
44 minutes?
Yeah.
To get a room, 44 minutes? Okay, I'm sorry.
From the, from the time, the, the time that we arrive to the time that we get a bed and, and get the patient offloaded is...
Okay.
Right now, we're averaging about 44 minutes right now.
Okay.
And we do run these reports daily, so we're, we're looking at that all the time, and then trying to see how we can work with the hospital, particularly, and again, we're seeing a lot of the tie-ups really at nighttime, and, and on the weekends. And again, that's a staffing issue, and the hospitals are typically saying that's a, that's a staffing issue, we just didn't have enough nurses, and so, you know, there's a nurse ratio, nurse-patient ratio that they have to work with. So a lot of that is, is geared right at that, so that you, it just takes more time to see these patients, so.
And that's when you're seeing, seeing the two to three hours?
Right, yeah, we're seeing, we're seeing longer times on that, on that side, yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I don't have any other questions, but I just want to commend you in all the wonderful work that you and your team are doing, just, it's, it's nice to see you out and about in the community, I know you do a lot of community events, and that is, I know you want that number to increase, but increasing by, or reducing that number by 51%, you all should be very, very proud, that is, that's amazing, and that, those are the, the folks, the vulnerable people that we want to touch, so I'm glad that you got the partner to continue the program, so thank you so much for all you do.
And we appreciate the support y'all provide, and again, I want to thank our crews, because really, when it comes down to it, it's our, our crews, our men and women that are out there every day, and, you know, sometimes at 2:00 in the morning, they say, of, of course, at all times, right, 2:00 in the morning seems to be everybody's favorite, let's fly a patient to Houston or San Antonio. And I've been on many of those flights where you wake up and off you go, and, and you don't come back for another 18 hours, so I really want to thank them, and again, I want to thank you folks for allowing us to...
Renee, before you, before you go, if you could have your community paramedicine folks in the back there stand up to get a round of applause for what they've been doing. That's amazing.
Bill does a good job, too.
He signs the checks. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Yes.
9A, 9 public hearings, at this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. 9A, public hearing for a rezoning request from residential duplex R2 district to residential multifamily M2 district for a 0.572-acre tract, being all of lot 6 and 0.113 acres out of lot 7, West subdivision located at 1605 North, 7th Street, applicant Mario Enorma Leon.
And is there, there is no one signed up for public, I'm sorry, for the public hearing?
Not on this one.
Is that correct?
Not on this one, mayor.
Okay, so at this time, we will open the public hearing, and having no one, having signed up to speak at this public hearing, we will close the public hearing.
Next one?
Next one, okay. B, public hearing for a rezoning request from residential single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for a property located at 301 West Philamore Avenue, bearing a legal description of lot 6, block, block 130, Harlingen original town site, applicant Juan Ramon, attachment planning rezoning.
Having no one here for the public hearing, we will open the public hearing but close the public hearing.
Okay. C, public hearing for a rezoning request from residential single-family R1 to residential duplex R2 district for lots 136 and 137, block 2, Avondale subdivision located at 2113 and 2115 Barcelona Avenue, applicant Omero D. Garza.
This time, we open the public hearing for this item, but having no one here to speak at the public hearing, or having anyone sign up for this item, we will now close the public hearing.
Item D, 9D, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of 18.788 acres tract of land out of block 33, David and Stevenson subdivision located along the east side of Cross, Crossed Road, approximately 3,260 feet north of Loop 489, applicant River Creek Management LLC.
And same with this, we will open the public hearing, but having no one here to speak, or having anyone signed up for this public hearing, we will close the public hearing at this time.
Item E, public hearing amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinance, is chapter 111, article 13, section 111-62, use carts by establishing the boundaries of the major commercial corridors and prohibiting the car wash use in said major corridors due to safety, applicant City of Harlingen.
All right, and we do have several folks signed up on this public hearing, and we will start with Mr. Frank Lozano.
Good afternoon, Harlingen and my fellow Harlingenites. This issue really isn't about car washes, it's about whether Harlingen is open for business or not, or if the city thinks it can ban commerce on streets like commerce. I drove around to several of these supposed car wash locations that are being built, they're all being built on empty lots. For example, the one on the corner of P and Tyler Street, it was an abandoned motel for over 10 years. What's to say if we ban car washes, that some other business is going to come and fill the void? This is what the population demands, that's what the free market demands. And true, I've waded into this S poll, it's known as the Facebook comment section, and I've seen what people are asking for. They're not asking necessarily for a ban on car washes, they want other businesses, like Barnes &amp; Noble, like Top Golf, who doesn't want that to come here? But if we ban car washes, does that magically mean a Morton Steakhouse franchise is going to pop out of the, the ground? No, it's a non sequitur, the logic doesn't follow. There is an argument that the car washes can just come in other locations that are not commercial corridors. Well, unfortunately, the city has zoning regulations, other parts of the city are zoned for residential use, light industrial use. If you ban the car washes on the areas such as Ed Carey and Harrison Tyler, where all the other businesses are located, that's essentially a ban on any other place for them to come. As a small business owner myself, it gives me pause that the city would even consider whether to place a blanket ban on any business type, just because there are supposedly too many. Well, whether or not there's too many is a decision for the free market to decide. Finally, what is the solution to this problem? Now, that's a rhetorical question, you neither can nor are able to answer that. What we need for more businesses to flourish is lower taxes, fewer regulations, such as this one, proposed one, and more government transparency. I don't want any business that wants to come to Harlingen to think that they can't simply because there's too many of like kind, I want there to be more competition, more choices for consumers. That is what lowers prices, and that's what makes the city thrive. This sets a bad precedent for other businesses, doesn't allow the city to be business friendly, and Frank Lozano thinks that Harlingen should be open for business. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, you want me to call them up?
Just one second. All right, thank you. And next, we have Don Ray Leonard.
This is America. It's called freedom, it's called liberty, it's called free market capitalism. If someone has the money and is willing to take the risk, they should be able to put their new business on whatever road they choose, within the proper zoning requirements. If it fails, that's on them. If it's successful, everybody wins. It's tax revenue for the city. It appears we have a problem prioritizing growth. Let's focus on stopping the industries and companies we are losing in Harlingen. ULA lost 100 aerospace jobs, Immigration Services Field Office is moving to Edinburgh, we have a failing mall. Let's focus on the developers trying to get their projects off the ground and completed in Harlingen. Developers reporting they have difficulties with inspections, they're not uniform, they're not getting them finished in a timely and efficient manner, this costs the developers precious time and money. Let's focus on how to resolve and manage proposed water and sewer rate increases for our city's customers. There are alternatives. It would be... It would be prudent to expend our energy on these issues. Let's see some city Facebook posts rallying the public to focus on our relevant needs. The car wash controversy is a nothing burger. And please, enough with the speed bumps. Thank you.
All right, Ron Lozano?
An ordinance that prohibits car washes from the most heavily trafficked count areas, so far, because I have a list of what the count is here in the city of Harlingen, and the most heavily traversed on a length basis is not even on one of the major corridors, which is seventy-seven Sunshine Strip. But as I was saying, a prohibition is a ban. A question posed is whether Renee Perez seeks to oppose free enterprise. I tend to doubt that, but on occasion, action speaks louder than words. The biggest is might. The whole thing hinges on this commission asked to ban new car washes, and you cannot replace them. They're doomed, because there's always going to be innovation in a country, as she just described, and that will happen in the near future. And like any business, I agree, failure might arise. Harlingen doesn't want to be known as a bona fide hammer and sickle type of community. Let even mom and pop enterprises flourish with the most minimal intrusion by heavy hand of bureaucrats or Big Brother, opening up this Pandora's Box at a time when even the most casual observer can note our politics is becoming abrasive. And now you're about to join the EDC as arbiters of who succeeds or not in a capitalist world we inhabit. So, if concerned citizens are generating traction online, how can the mayor say, remember, change doesn't happen behind a keyboard, it happens right here? At the last meeting when this was put up for action, no one knew something as relevant as how many car washes does Harlingen have? And if we know now, are any of them outside the proposed boundaries? As the video shows, the mayor wants to add commerce in District Two. Adhering to a habit I acquired at birth, substantial eating, I still can't believe any factual basis was done to say nine out of ten people want a new restaurant, and by implication, those same people don't want a car wash. Harlingenites and other visitors want delicious, quality food and beverage. Some want to arrive at the destination in a clean vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. Mr. Leo?
Good evening. So, just a little short while ago, we just gave somebody an award, Cafe Four Oh Six, and Mayor, you've been very, very wonderful about recognizing our small businesses in our city. And I'm concerned about the business community. I own a business, I collect sales tax, I pay sales tax to the state, I'm a conduit. And so, I want you all to remember something, that running a business, turning the key, making payroll, collecting those taxes is very, very, very difficult. So, the question is, should we have car wash limitation? The short answer, no. We don't need any additional government intervention into our businesses. Harlingen already has a bad reputation of not being business friendly. And if you want me to expose some of the recent people that tried to open in our city and what it took for them, I'll be more than happy to, but I don't think it's necessary for this conversation. If your fear is being known as car wash city, let's try coffee shop city and speed bump city, okay? A local news agency this morning reported that this proposal is really about safety, and if you read that agenda, what does it say? Safety. So, let's talk about that. Let's get to the root of this problem. Let's ban all businesses that involve a drive-through. Dining has gone away since COVID, and mobile apps have taken over, and it's all too convenient to go through that drive-through. Just in this room alone, if you go out and look, we probably have one person for every car parked out in the parking lot. Just go out there and check. We love our cars. I was in the auto parts business for twenty-five years, and how many auto parts stores do we currently have? Now, count all the auto repair shops, both with a placard and working out of a garage, and add the number of dealerships we currently have and are coming, and all the other supporting businesses to these vehicles that we love to have. So, we want clean cars, they're a big investment. Today, I bought a car. That car cost me more than my home cost me in nineteen eighty-four, and I still live there. This city has seventy thousand people and probably thirty thousand automobiles. No wonder we now have more traffic than ever before, safety. And do we have a, and do we have a problem with automobiles waiting in line at drive-throughs? I know at least two locations. So, why not start ticketing those people that pull into those drive-throughs and are parked out on Sunshine Strip or Ed Carey Drive? That's where the problem comes from, not from a car wash. What we need is to help keep our business open and operating, not a mess of hoops to jump through. We have a commissioner who seems to spearhead this action. This commissioner ran on a platform of making Harlingen a place...
Thank you, Mr. Leo, you're out of time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to Robbie Cruz. Is that not the right time, Amanda?
Yeah, we put the time for three minutes.
I started three minutes.
All right, we just won, and we're happy to talk to you as much as you'd like, after the meeting, Mr. Leo.
I am your commissioner, so I'll be more than willing to talk to you after the meeting, sir.
And... All right, let's, let's, both of you gentlemen know the rules of decorum. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Cruz, is he present? I called him early? No, Robbie Cruz and Riley Garza? Riley Garza? And, sir? You're not Riley Garza or Robbie Cruz, but you are? Joe Peña, you have the mic.
Sorry for not understanding the rules earlier.
That's okay.
But I know the process now.
We welcome you back.
Thank you for letting me speak. And I'm not going to say I'm new to the community. However, I've been here fourteen years, and I was reading the article on the car washes and seeing it through a different perspective. I'm more focused on the beauty of the city, which should take the lead from the car washes. People like myself love a clean car. Second biggest investment that we have, first investment is our homes. First investment for you guys is the city of Harlingen. One thing that I look, as I drive every day through these cities in the valley, now that I live here in Harlingen, I'm looking for beautification. I'm looking for a town that's pretty, that's something that's for someone to be proud of. As I drive down these streets, unfortunately, I see, and I don't want to say it, but, you know, it's just not an attractive city to come to. Sidewalks are dirty, weeds all over the place, unkept trees, dead trees, trees that are sickly, that are not being taken care, brought down. Those are safety issues. Probably down the road, you know, some of the firemen probably have been to some of these sites. Law enforcement doesn't need that kind of attraction as well. Now, when I speak about the appearance of the city of Harlingen, you know, I always want to see, what am I bringing to people from out of town to come to Harlingen for, to visit me? What's my focus point? I said, I really don't have one. It's either picking them up at the airport and taking them straight to South Padre Island. Or if I want to go to a big city, it's McAllen or Brownsville, you know? If I want to go international, I go to Pogresmo, one of the safest, you know, places here. But for the city of Harlingen, I have a big concern, because, you know, I've been here fourteen years, and I want to, I want to see Harlingen thrive. I understand gentrification, gentrification is a true thing that's going to be coming pretty soon. City of Harlingen is a little bit behind the rest of the cities in the valley. The other ones have taken off and they've grown, Brownsville, Edinburgh, McAllen. Harlingen is on the bottom of the scale, but at the same time, they're in an advantageous position to take advantage of the slow growth, but in the process, they can continue to bring good companies in, but they have to have a good presentation for the city. I come in right through Harlingen by Sam's Club, and just underneath the underpass, the palm trees aren't kept, doesn't look clean, doesn't look really, wow, it doesn't give you that wow look. And I'm looking for that. If you're going to take tax dollars from my pocket, I want to see something in return. The prettier the city looks, the more people will want to come, this is included. I know that big, it doesn't sound good right now, because, you know, you don't probably see it coming, I'm not talking about you guys, but I'm talking in general, but it's going to come. If it comes when we're not expecting it, a lot of these people are going to be displaced. You see it? If people can't afford to pick up their homes and to fix their homes, they're not going to do it when the price goes up. We're going to have a lot of issues with that issue of gentrification. Anyway, I had a lot more to say. I probably got cut off in the...
Mr. Peña, do you live, you live here in Harlingen for fourteen years?
I live in Harlingen.
Okay, if you want to give your information to Amanda, I might have a spot on the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board, and maybe you can be on that.
No, no, I'm willing, I'm willing to do that.
Well, there you go, so if you give it to Ms. Amanda, and maybe you can...
We're fighting over you, sir.
Yeah, I feel like now we're on The Voice, let me turn my chair.
I wanted to say real quick...
I think it's fantastic that you came out.
I got two, I got, I'm looking at the students, and I'm looking at law enforcement, I'm a law enforcement background. These kids that are living in this area, from Real Hondo, San Manito, Harlingen, La Feria, or anywhere in between, there's so many kids that don't have jobs. There's no excuse not to have workers work in the streets. I've worked at, I've worked at Juven, I worked in the juvenile...
I hate to cut you off, Mr. Peña, but I cut off Mr. Leo, and I want to be fair, follow the rules.
Can I take this twenty-five seconds?
But, I think we gave you more, I think we gave you an additional twenty-five seconds.
Thank you very much.
But if you can give your information to Amanda, that would help us. Thank you so much. If you want to... Sure, you were looking on that. I think it's great. All right, at this time, we will now close the public hearing, and we're moving on to item ten?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You go ahead, I'll go on, if you want to, I'll do the first one, so that way you can... So, now we're moving on to the action items. We have item ten A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential duplex R2 district to residential multifamily M2 district for a 0.572 acre tract, being all of lot six and 0.113 acres out of lot seven, West subdivision located at sixteen oh five North Seventh Street. Javier?
Mayor City Commission, good evening. This is the property on Seventh Street, across the street from the high school. At the corner with the, with the Looper. You had approved a rezoning to duplex back in twenty twenty-two, this used to have dilapidated buildings. The applicants restored the building and have two beautiful duplexes on site. These are the updated photos of the renovated building, so you have two dwelling units, and he, the applicant, has done a really good job fixing the buildings. But the applicant would like to add more units, he has the space to build more apartments, so he's requesting an upgrade on the zoning to multifamily zoning to allow him to build more dwelling units in the property. There was no opposition from the surrounding property owners, so the planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Define more units.
Well, with the multifamily zoning, it could be three, four, as long as they comply with the landscaping and the parking, it could be a two-story building, even a three-story. So, I cannot tell you exactly...
So, did they need to put in pavement for parking?
Yes.
On your photo, I just saw one short driveway with one automobile.
Yes, they will have to build a parking lot. Yes, correct.
And then, will they have to plan for drainage?
Not for, not for drainage, because it's an existing subdivision, but parking and landscaping.
Is there any other questions for Javier? Is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Item ten B?
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration and possible action.
Mayor, we need to read the caption on the ordinance.
Mark.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential duplex R2 district to residential multifamily M2 district for a point zero, for a 0.572 acre tract, being all of lot six and lot 0113 acres out of lot seven, JH West subdivision located at sixteen oh five North Seventh Street, applicants Mario and Norma Leon.
Motion to approve again.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Item B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for a property located at three oh one West Fillmore Avenue, bearing a legal description of lot six, block one thirty, Harlingen original townsite, applicant Juan Ramon.
Yes, this property is at the corner of Fillmore and B. In this case, the applicant, the property owner built a second dwelling unit without proper permits, so he has already a second dwelling, a second unit in the property. This is the main house, and then you have a back building, which is the second unit. And that's the view from B Street. And that's, that's, on the left is the main house, and then on the right is the unit that was built without proper permits. It has plumbing, it has restrooms, it has a kitchen and a bedroom.
What size is that?
It's about eight hundred square feet. It's a small building, but it has...
And it's up on blocks?
Yes, correct.
That's a cuartito.
Or you could say a guest house. So, the applicant is willing to hire an engineer to do the upgrades on the electrical, plumbing, windstorm, and doing all, everything that he needs to do to bring the building up to code, but the zoning is essential.
So, this was backyard carpentry?
You can say that.
No, no plans drawn up?
No, they, no.
No engineering, no, no nothing?
But he's willing to back up, right? I mean, backtrack?
So, he's willing, if the zoning is approved, he already contacted an engineer to help him with the plans, and is willing to make all the upgrades to bring the building up to code and be in compliance.
And how will we know, how will we enforce that?
So, we, he, he has citations in municipal court, he already has a few of those, but he's ready to submit plans, he has an engineer ready to go, we just, he just needs this rezoning to be approved.
So, you said citations plural?
Yeah, he has like three or four citations, correct.
Why, why more than one?
Because we have, sometimes you have to do more to, to get the applicant to respond.
Pay attention.
Yeah.
It's the same citation?
Yeah, it's just, sometimes they don't respond, so you have to follow up with another one, until, yeah, finally, in municipal court, it becomes a major issue that needs to be resolved.
And new buildings need windstorm.
Yeah, so the engineer will have to do an assessment, so the building may need some reinforcement so that it complies with the one hundred and forty miles.
Will this have its own water meter?
It's already connected to plumbing, it has, it has a toilet.
But will it have its own water meter?
No, one water, one meter for the, for the, for the whole property.
Is that legal?
Yes, and that doesn't, a duplex.
You can have, you can have multiple properties on one lot, but if it's general, if it's a single-family residential, you can only have one meter. That way, prevents you from renting it out.
I do, I think that, you know, I mean, unfortunately, he didn't go to, take the steps that we would have liked, but we'd like for him to do that now, and that's what you're seeking with this rezoning, so that way, and you're going to follow up to make sure it gets done?
Yes, well, yes, because we have those citations pending in municipal, municipal court.
Is there any other questions for Javier? Is there a motion?
We have to read the caption.
I'm sorry. Mark?
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for a property located at three oh one West Fillmore Avenue, bearing a legal description of lot six, block one thirty, Harlingen original townsite.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Okay, moving on. Consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning from a residential single... Consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning from a residential single-family R1 to residential duplex R2 District for lots 136 and 137, Block 2, Avondale Subdivision located at 2113 and 2115 Barcelona Avenue, applicant Omero D. Garza.
So this is on Barcelona, just listed 77. On this property, no construction has been done. They're doing everything the correct way. And so there's an existing house in one of the lot, one of the properties. If the zoning is approved, they want to make an addition to the back to make a second unit. And then a new duplex in the other lot that is vacant. There are several duplexes across the street. So that's the property with the existing house on the left and then the vacant lot on the right. And then these are the existing duplexes across the street. So it's kind of in line with what was in the neighborhood. No, no opposition and planning and zoning commission recommended approval unanimously.
Is there any discussion? Mark, if you read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen rezoning from residential single-family R1 District to residential duplex R2 District for lots 136 and 137, Block 2, Avondale Subdivision located at 2113 and 2115 Barcelona Avenue.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Item D, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation of 18.788 acre tract of land out of Block 33, David and Stevenson Subdivision located along the east side of Crossit Road approximately 3,260 feet north of Loop 499, applicant River Creek Management LLC.
So this subdivision will be in Commissioner Lopez's district. So his district is growing.
Yes, we're excited.
All right, is.
Is this one that's in the middle of, not nowhere, the question is, is this between, is this subdivision half of it in Combs and the other half in?
Correct. Yes, you have a, you have the master plan for the whole subdivision on the screen. The highlighted, the one highlighted in blue is in RETJ. Property to the north is Combs City Limit. So it's a little bit of a strange situation, but the section in RETJ, the developer would like for that to be in Harlingen city limits and get the city services.
Can you have some of that already in your, in your district?
That's the one right next to it. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do to force Combs to like, to take it, to give us that part. They, they would have to, you know, Mark would have to do it through legal.
That would have to be annexed.
They would have to be annexed and then we would have to annex it. And based on conversations I had, at least with the previous mayor, there was no appetite for it. I haven't talked to the current mayor. Silver, right? I think is the current mayor. Seems like a nice guy, I haven't talked to him about it.
I think it's worth trying to ask, you know. It would be nice if the whole thing was inside Harlingen.
Gabe, could you reach out to Silver to see if he's willing, excuse me, the mayor of Combs and their commission to see if they'd be willing to.
To be annexed anyway?
Yeah. Again, all we can do is ask, right?
And we'd like to see if that is something that the city would like to do also. I think Harlingen Water Works would like to weigh in on probably.
Harlingen Water Works is already gonna be the one that gives this whole area water.
Well, that would, that would depend on who has the CCN. I don't know.
It's Harlingen.
It's Harlingen, okay.
All right. Well, that's great. Any other discussion? No? All right. Mark, will you read the caption?
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose an 18.788 acre tract of land at a Block 33, David and Stevenson Subdivision located on the east side of Crossit Road approximately 3,260 feet north of Loop 499, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Item E, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Article 13, Section 111-62, used charted by establishing the boundaries of the major commercial corridors and prohibiting the car wash use in the said major corridors due to safety, applicant City of Harlingen.
We have to remove this. It was tabled. I'll make a motion to remove from table and bring it on.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, it is now removed from the table and open for discussion.
Mayor speak.
Should we, do you have, let's let.
Sure.
I jumped the gun. Let's let Javier.
So we mapped, what we did since the last meeting, we mapped the existing car washes, which are the ones in yellow. And then the ones under construction are in blue. So it's about a 20 total. And then we also provided in your packet an alternative ordinance for your consideration. And then we also listed the, all the car washes.
Can you repeat, how many car washes do we have already?
About 20 total.
Okay, can you, I know you saw, there's a list there of other car washes. Can you put that up there?
Here they are.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mike, you were gonna say something?
Yes, the planning and zone, I don't know who brought this before, planning and zoning. But it's very suspicious that someone or some people would want to stop commerce in the city of Harlingen. But the planning and zoning said, no way on this. Don't ban anything. I don't know how many of you up here have read the Communist Manifesto. The two guys to me, to my left just groaned.
The problem, Mike, okay, is that, one, we're in the US of A. Two, you don't even know how I'm gonna vote because, to be honest with you, I do believe in the free enterprise system, okay? I have worked in the private industry, not in the government section.
I'm bringing up the Communist Manifesto by Karl Marx. I've read it three or four times to learn from it. And there's only one valid point in there. Capitalism is a rough system. But I'll add that it's the finest economic system ever invented. And then the Communist Manifesto, they talk about the government controlling the means of production. And that's what we have here. The government wants to control the means of production on car washes. I hate socialism in all of its flavors. I love capitalism. It allows people to succeed and allows people to fail. But they're putting their own money or borrowed money up for this to take a business risk. And if some of these fail, so be it. If they all succeed, so be it. But what this comes down to is allowing the bells of economic freedom to ring. And I root, you know, I'm a chamber ambassador. I cut ribbons all the time, all over the city. And I want every business to succeed. And I know some of them will fail. But they're taking the entrepreneurial risk to try to make a buck and try to succeed, as we had with Erica from Cafe 409. And there's only two business owners up here, Mayor Norman and myself, but we're a service business. We don't need a location. If you're gonna sell donuts or car washes or any goods, if you're gonna sell, sell coffee, you need to be on main roads because that's where the traffic is. You don't need to be set aside to some obscure street where nobody will drive by and know of your existence, where government guarantees a business's failure. You let the economic bells of freedom ring, I repeat myself. Do not squash any business. So what if we're Car Wash City? It's better to be known that than any other things negative. And having car washes in your town is not a negative thing. People will determine whether they get their car washed here or there or not at all. The people, the citizens, will drive the economy of car washes. Do not get in the citizen's way to spend their money as they want it. And car washes are very safe and very water efficient. They have filtration systems, they gather the water, they filter it out, and they reuse it. It's way more efficient than you and I going out on our driveway washing a car with the hose running. And as for sales tax dollars, we have to get rid of the medical community, the legal community, the financial community, because we, we don't, and the healthcare facilities. And you already heard Renee from Steck say, we're losing nurses and we're losing doctors in this town. But they don't pay any sales tax, so we should get rid of them all. As for safety, that's a bogus issue. You ever tried to drive down Ed Carey and pull, and drive by Starbucks? The traffic's backed out on Ed Carey. You ever try in the morning to drive down, down Ed Carey and, and you see Whataburger? And they're lined up on the right lane to get in the Whataburger. We don't want to prohibit those businesses. We want all businesses to thrive. And the city does not attract businesses. That's not our job. This, our job is to make a city a lower tax base and a pleasant-looking place in which people can live and work. And so we want to encourage all sorts of commerce in this city.
So I take it you're against?
I'm for free capitalism.
I'm joking with you.
And all of its risks.
So, thank you, thank you for that, Commissioner. Comments?
I'm ready to vote.
Comments?
I do. First off, you know, I appreciate your comments, Mike, but I would disagree with saying that this is, first off, this is not a ban on car washes. It's not a ban. Car washes will be, would be free to, to come into Harlingen. All we're asking is that they not be in the major corridors of our city. Because my biggest fear for these car washes, because I believe in the free system, free enterprise system just as much as you do. Actually, I fought for the free enterprise system just like you and Fort Kingsley did. So saying they were communist and all that, that doesn't work. But going back to the issue at hand, my biggest fear when it comes to these car washes is that, you're right, free enterprise, you know, dictates who's going to win and who's going to fail, which is good. That's how, it's the way it's supposed to be. That's what our, that's how the, the foundation of our free enterprise system in the United States is. But my biggest fear is that we have so many of these car washes that what's going to happen, right now we have 22, 22 car washes for a population of about, what, 74,000? I think that's the last time I checked. So we have 22 car washes. So my big issue is, you know, supply and demand, that's gonna work. Some are going to win, some are going to lose. But what happens is eventually this little boom of car washes that we have right now might eventually go away. And if it does, we're gonna have all these eyesores of car washes on some of these major corridors. And that's not what I want to see. I don't want to see these eyesores because remember, some people are saying, okay, we have too many coffee shops, we have too many, you know, restaurant, or, you know, coffee shops is an example people tend to use. The thing is with coffee shops, that building that the coffee shop uses can be repurposed for something else. It could be used as a restaurant, it could be used for a number of things that, that, that building can be used for. A car wash has a specific infrastructure. It is, you cannot repurpose it for anything else. So imagine just right here on Tyler, think about the car washes we just have in that specific area in four blocks. You enter Harlingen, the first thing you see on the left-hand side, you see Blue Wave, okay? And then you go, not even half a block further, you're going to see that new one that's going to be built right there. And then if you move one block to the, to the right, to the south, you're gonna see another car wash that's in the corner, right next to the movies. And then right on the following block, right there on Lincoln, you see another car wash that's right there, going to be right across from HEB. That's not even including the new one that they have on Sam's, which is in that same small radius. So imagine, these car businesses, these car washes go out of business? What happens? You're gonna have these eyesores. So when people drive into Harlingen, what are they going to see? These abandoned car washes that nobody's using. And the thing is, we have, this has happened before on Grimes. We had a car wash that failed on Grimes and it was left basically abandoned for about 10 years. It wasn't just until recently that they, they, some investors came in and had the capital to bulldoze the, the car wash. And now they're, I believe they're building apartments there. That's what I think they're doing now. So think about it. These car washes are gonna be on our major corridors, possibly abandoned, and then all of a sudden, if they go out of business, it's going to take someone with a lot of money to come in and hopefully bulldoze it and build something else. That is what I'm trying to prevent. I don't want us, Mike may be okay with Harlingen being known as the capital of car washes. I think Harlingen's better than that. I think Harlingen deserves better than that. We have so many more businesses here in Harlingen that we should be known for, and car washes should not be one of them. Again, my thing is just that we, we can do better. And I know there's another, there was a compromise kind of sort of ordinance that we should be looking into. And you're saying that we should keep, another point that I want to bring up, you're saying that we should have no say when it comes to businesses, Mike, but we do that already. That's why we have zoning, that's why we have all that. We literally say, okay, this business can be here, this business cannot be here. So again, this is not a ban on car washes. And the thing is that you say consistent because I know, was it a year ago in April, we had a young businesswoman that came here. She was a young businesswoman that had a business in San Antonio. She came over here to Harlingen and she wanted to open up a business in, on Tyler, right there. She wanted to open a business and that business that she was there, was she was going to be selling what some people may consider taboo, but she was selling adult lingerie. That's what she was selling. And she came home, she came to our meeting, she gave us a passionate speech, how this was her dream to open up here in Harlingen, and that she had finally saved enough capital to invest in this, and she, this is what she wanted to do. These, everybody here on, here was here on that commission, and that happened April of last year. And most of you right now are going to say that, oh, I'm for business, I'm for business. But the only people that voted for this young lady to actually have her business was myself and Mike. Everybody else said, no, we're not going to allow you to have this business, all because she sold lingerie, adult lingerie on her business. So you're, in essence, you guys are picking and choosing. What's the difference between that young, local, small business owner and these companies? These companies are coming into Harlingen, building up these car washes. I don't, I don't see the difference. You're not being, how's it called? You're not being consistent, okay? You're regulating when you want to just because it goes against your, you know, I don't know, maybe you're uncomfortable with, I don't know, adult lingerie or something, but you're not being consistent. All I'm asking is, it's not going to be banned. Again, this is not a ban on car washes. It's not a ban. All we're asking is that they get relocated somewhere else other than the major corridors. That's all it is. It's not a ban.
And anybody in real estate or anybody that's opened a business will tell you, location, location, location. And you want to have as many cars drive by your business because sooner or later, one of those cars will turn into your parking lot and purchase something from you. If, if, and we're talking prime location on these major thoroughfares, one of these car washes goes down, the real estate under it is worth a whole lot of money, and somebody will come along and tear the place down and build something else.
In 10 years?
No, not in 10 years.
That's what happened on Grimes?
And that's one instance, so you're drawing an inference on one instance, and that's not a major thoroughfare. And it's a minor thoroughfare. And it's not many businesses on that part of Grimes. And so, location, location, location. And if you put these off in other places, they won't be seen. So once again, government is trying to control the means of production, and that is wrong.
I'm going just to interject here a little bit. I want to put on the record that there is only adult lingerie, because you kept emphasizing adult, but there's only adult, there's no other type of lingerie. And I do remember that, that lady that came here. And I tend, and I do recall that Mike voted in favor. I don't know if you remember.
Yeah, because what I said was, it's not my cup of tea, but it's a legal business.
Right. And I think I agreed with you then, and I'm agreeing with you now. And I think that, you know, here in the city of Harlingen, one of the things, at least, I truly believe this entire commission is in support of small business, all business. We want to make sure that Harlingen, and everyone knows that, I say this everywhere I go, we're open for business. And I want to make sure that, that that message is driven home, no matter what industry it is. But you can't ignore that we are also public servants and we are here to ensure that we are a voice for the community. So I do want to commend Commissioner Perez for going out there and being engaged with the community and, and getting people's thoughts. Somebody here, I don't know which, I don't remember, who quoted me saying that we don't govern based on social media. We govern and we make decisions here in City Hall. And it is important to note that no one is here, present. And, you know, we can't, we can't just be listening to folks that are upset and that are unhappy and they are venting on, on, on social media. Because that's not where we make decisions. And it would have been nice to have some of those folks. And it would have been nice to have some of those folks here, so that they can provide their side of the story. Nonetheless, I did notice that there was some division within the commission, and so I asked Javier to look to see if there was some form of a compromise in, in terms of car washes. I honestly, my personal view is, we have 70,000 people, 71,000 people, 20 car washes doesn't seem all that many, when you think about it, when you break it down, right? However, there is a recent surge, if you will, and not just isolated to Harlingen, it's all over the country. But maybe we do need to ensure for future, the future of Harlingen, that there is a conservation component in these car washes. And like Mike said, I looked into a few of these, and they do, they really do. I know that Blue Wave does have a recycling component. They use much less water than folks understand that are voicing concerns on social media. But there's nothing wrong with ensuring that all car washes moving forward also have a conservation business plan. And so, providing what's in the packet as an SUP would give the city, give the commission an opportunity when the next car wash wants to open up, and it doesn't matter what location. I do agree, location, location is important, which is why when I came to Harlingen, I wanted to be on Harrison, right? Because that's, that's where, when people drive by, they'll see you. However, there is, you know, issues with traffic, and it is a concern. And, and someone mentioned that there is backup at certain restaurants, and I do see that, and that's something that we need to look at, because when Tech Dot comes knocking and wanting to build medians in, in certain streets, that we are also not in favor, because it hurts businesses, because you have to drive around the median to get back to the business. That happens because there are fatalities, and that's a real issue. So it would be nice to be able to come and to understand if a business is going to open, especially another car wash, that there are certain requirements that we have in the community to make sure that they have enough space on their lot. Sometimes you have, you don't have enough space, and that is going to be the reason why folks are out on the street. And so, all of those things can come before the commission if we add them to the SUP process, just like the young lady that came here and before us. It was an SUP, and unfortunately, she wasn't able to, to open her, her business. But that was something that the commission decided, and that's in the past. But moving forward, this is an opportunity for us to allow for business to continue to open here in Harlingen, whether it be car washes or any other business, but for them to have, to go, to come before the commission, present, and for this commission to understand and weigh in on that decision. And also allows the neighboring business owners and residences, which is important too, to come and voice their concerns. You don't want to have a car wash in your backyard if you're in a, at your home. And I know Javier and I talked about, in some communities in the valley, that is exactly the case. And luckily, I don't think that that's been an issue here, but doesn't mean that that could potentially happen in the future without any safeguards. So I think that this is something that the commission should really consider. It's not something that we need to adopt as is. Javier can, can work on it, but it's not limiting whatsoever, but it is making sure that, that there is conservation efforts, that there is sufficient parking, that traffic is taken into consideration aesthetically. We do that with other businesses, making sure. We just had the battery storage, that, that, we had several of those come into town. They have proven to be great community partners, helping the soccer complex, helping other areas in, in town. And that's a way that maybe car washes can, can do the same. And then maybe the community will feel differently about them. But I think that's an alternative that you should really consider, and I think that's a, it's a win-win for, for everyone. But ultimately, you gentlemen, get to decide.
Well, keep in mind, the car washes that are coming in, every single one has dropped some money for a feasibility study. Every single one of them is building from the ground up. And we must adhere to what they're doing. They're not out here just to say, oh, I'm going to open one car wash here and let it rip. They have invested some money before they lay down any type of foundation. We have to keep that in mind. So they're not coming in here lightly, and we start curtaining these, these car washes right now, when, and when, when is it going to stop? And we brought up, and I know this, we have some businesses that are moving away. And we have a big issue. Water conservation is something that we have to look at very, very closely. We were given, what, a packet of 170 million back in the summer of 2022. Thanks to inflation, that's 340 million. That's on the top of my list. Do we need revenues? Of course we do. And if they're willing to come in and drop some money on a feasibility study, and they feel they can be successful, I'm all for it. I'm not going to be one that's going to ask them not to come in.
I think every, I mean, the, these big car washes, most of them, I mean, it doesn't take much to do, to do some research to find out that they know that they're going to be successful, and that's why they're opening in Harlingen. That, that's why they're opening all, all across the country. It's a way for passive income for folks in equity funds and people that just know that they need a place where they can see their money continue to grow, and that's, and that's what happened. So I, there's no doubt that that's what's happening. Is, Mark, is there, if, right now, the, the caption is for this ordinance to limit in specific corridors. But I also have on here this potential for an SUP. How do I?
Okay, so what's on the agenda right now, what the public was given notice on, was this particular ordinance that required, or got limited, the placement of new car washes along existing corridors. And there's a substitute ordinance that, that's something different. It addresses the same general subject, but it really addresses something different. So what we would have to do, because it's not just an amendment of this ordinance, it's a completely different ordinance.
Correct.
We'd have to set that ordinance for first reading, if that's with the commission.
And another meeting?
At another time.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that that be placed on the agenda for the next meeting, and we don't need to discuss it now, everyone can think about it, but then we can read the caption for what was posted on the agenda? Is that right?
Um, if you're just going to, well...
I'm not, I'm asking, I'm asking you for your opinion.
I mean, you can, it just depends what action you're going to take on the ordinance that's posted.
I would like to vote.
You want to vote it up or down? Yes, I will.
Yeah, okay. I want to say I'm not done with discussion, though. Mike said that he's comfortable with being known as, as the capital city of car washes. So I would ask Daniel, and I would ask Ford, I would ask Frank, to see if you guys would feel the same way. Do you feel as Mike, does that, it's okay for us to be known as the capital of car washes here in the RGV?
And what statistical analysis have you done to determine that we're the capital of car washes in the valley or the state of Texas?
I'm asking a simple question.
No, it's not a simple question. What's your statistical analysis?
Mike, I don't interrupt you. Because the reason I'm asking, because, you know, some people didn't show up. The thing is, the reason why I think some of these people don't show up is because they're cynical. And that's a lot of, that's, because I'm on social media a lot, and I think that there's...
I misheard you. You think that they're what?
Cynical.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, they're cynical. They're cynical because...
I heard "single."
Oh, no. Cynical.
The little "o" here?
No. Cynical. I believe a lot of, a lot of the, and that's what I get frustrated. That's why a lot of people are cynical with government, because they feel that their leaders don't pay attention to them and don't, you know, listen to them. And, and I find, that's why every time we have people here that come to our meetings, that's why I go out of my way to shake their hands and tell them, you know, thank you for coming, because I want them to feel welcome, that I want them to come to these meetings. But I think, like, a lot of these people that, that I saw online that were strongly advocating against this, they feel that their voices are not being heard. And I, I think that we, I know, I'm not asking us to, you know, rule from social media like, like some people suggest. What I'm just saying is to take that into consideration. Because why, I would prefer them to come over here to the meeting, because that's what I always tell my students as a teacher, I was like, hey, you need to make a difference. You need to show up and do all that. That's true. But at the same time, nowadays, that, that is a, a form of communication that people use now. They use social media to, 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 to express themselves. And some of it's bad, of course, and some of it's good, but if you look at the majority of the comments, the majority of the comments is, a car wash is enough. So I, I walked in here knowing today that this was going to be dead. I knew that. In fact, Mike just put it on life support last week, because I know you guys wanted to kill it last time. So I get that. So I knew this wasn't good, but I just wanted to put it on, on there that, that we're listening to the people. That's what I want us to do. We're listening to people, we're taking into consideration. I don't want us to just go around and say, you know, we're killing it, because we're not going to, we're not going to even consider it. And so, I'm going to ask that question. So if you, again, you guys don't have to answer if you don't want to. But I'm just curious. Would you, are you guys comfortable with that?
I'm prepared to vote. My vote will indicate what I think.
Amen.
Yeah, I, I agree with Ford here, but, Rini, I really have to commend you, man. I think out of all of us, you're the best in tuned with what people are saying on the social media. You do a phenomenal job of reaching out to people to get different points of view on this. And the way I'm interpreting the social media is that, that puts more pressure on us, what we're doing at the EDC. That puts more pressure on us to promote other businesses to come into town. And so I, I appreciate their frustrations, and it makes me work that much harder with our EDC, makes us much work that much harder to bring in those industries so that then we can support the retail that people want. I would love, just like Mr. Pena said, for one day Harrison and Tyler to look like Rodeo Drive. We're just not there yet. But I, I appreciate everything you're doing, Rini, I do. But I'm ready to vote as well.
I have one more question. I always have one more question. So what is the difference between what we're doing today, saying no, that we can't have any, we don't want any restrictions on car washes, and we, we don't want it, we want it to go ahead and, you know, just let them come? And what's the difference between what we're doing right now to what we did in April? I mean, what's, what's the difference? Is it because of what she was selling, or what, what's the difference? I don't see it. Because, because the last time you guys were all for regulating, and then right now, you're all against it. So I just don't know what the difference is. I'm just curious.
I'll tell you what, for me, it was a distance between that location and the church in McLaughlin Heart of America. That was it.
Okay.
Okay. And I did get, and I did get calls, okay? So I also listened to my constituents, okay? So for me, that was my call. That's why I went against that particular business at that location. Granted, as a kid, there was plenty of bars down that street, but I didn't have control of that, as there were plenty of pool halls, okay? I didn't have a control of that. But today, yes, people call and say, hey, Commissioner, keep this in mind. And I do listen. And no, I'm not Mr. Facebook. I'll tell you that right now, okay? But that's my reasoning.
So I have a question. Rini, where do you get your car washed?
It's called, his, his name is Rini Pettis Jr.?
Want to give a shout out to Las Brisas on Harrison?
I happen to use "go" down on Ed Carey.
Make a motion to deny this ordinance.
Second.
Do we have to read the caption?
Yeah.
In order to amend the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Zoning, Article 13, Section 11162, Use Chart, by establishing the boundaries of the major commercial corridors and prohibiting the car wash use in the said major corridors due to safety, providing for publication, and other matters related to the foregoing.
Make a motion to reject this ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. To deny.
Yes, I know.
Yes. Okay.
Like I said, life support, any.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for that lively discussion. Moving on.
Item F, consideration of possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plan with the conditions proposed East Treasure Haven Phase Two subdivision located at the northeast corner of Haynes Drive and Wayland Road, being 25.33 acres comprised of 10.0 acres out of Lot 9, 9.99 acres out of Lot 10, 2.67 acres out of Lot 15, and 2.57 acres out of Lot 16, Block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, applicant, she's consulting, consulting company, I guess.
This is Mr. Elizares subdivision that was mentioned last week, that he's having to pay additional fees to Harlingen Water Works. The only reason why this is coming before you, they're proposing to widen this ditch for the drainage requirements.
Okay, is there any discussion? There's, this is not an ordinance, so is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, consideration of possible action to authorize the closing, vacating, transferring, and abandonment of a 0.05 acre tract of land located between Lot 27, Block 2, LNL subdivision, and Lot D, Southwest Harlingen addition, located on the west side of K Street, approximately 48 feet north of Fillmore Avenue, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents for the conveyance and release of alley right away and convey to James De Leon, applicant, James De Leon.
So on Fillmore and K Street, there's a, an alley that got dedicated 100 years ago that doesn't connect to anything. We checked with all the utility companies, nobody has any objections. The property owner to the south is very interested in purchasing the property.
Hey, Mark, you want to just read the ordinance, please?
Just real quick, we would have to appraise a property...
Yes.
And then get the appraised value and...
That will be the next step, is for an appraisal to be done, that has to be paid by the, the interested owner. He has to pay for that cost. And then whatever value it comes out to, he will have to pay for that, and then the deed is prepared.
And this is not an ordinance, so just a motion?
Just a quick question. Who determines the value of the property?
So the appraisal, licensed appraisal company is hired by the city, and, and whatever that value comes out to, that's the, that's the funds that they have to pay to purchase the land from the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H.
Just one second, Amanda.
Pardon me?
Let me, yes. All right.
Yeah, that was true.
Let me take things a little bit out of order.
Okay.
So, we're, we got a lot of veterans here, right? The veterans probably want to go home, they're tired of being here. So let's take up your, your...
You love it.
You love it? Well, you, you may. I see Danny over there. No, and Maricela, I just want to be respectful of your time. After all, I mean, you fought for us and all, right?
Let's, which one?
P. Let's, let's take item P, so that way, if, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to go home, you can.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We hope to see you at every sundown, every market days, and farmer's market. So you wanted it, you got it, you're going to be there. We appreciate you. You're welcome to stay. Just, all right, now we can go back.
Item H, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, Chapter 38, Solid Waste Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing fees for commercial trash containers provided by the city of Harlingen as they relate to Chapter 38-69, Attachment Public Works. This item was tabled during the meeting of March the 6th, 2024.
Can we get a motion to take it off the table?
Take it off the table.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Pettis. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And it is now off the table. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So this item, basically, it's, it's trying to educate the citizens, right? On our current ordinance, it, it only states that we have a three-cubic yard size of container for trash. We are adding all the other different sizes and fees that we have, which is a four-cubic yard, six, eight, and an eight-cubic yard. And so, it's, basically, we want to be able to have all those fees in our ordinance to make sure that the citizens know what, what their, what their fees are. Right now, it's only for the three-cubic yard.
Mayor, we, we're going to approve this at the last meeting, but we were missing the ordinance, so it's in your packet now, so...
Okay, so, can we read the caption?
In ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, amending Chapter 18, Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing fees for commercial trash containers, collection and disposable all garbage, rust, yard waste, and trash within the city limits related to Chapters 38, 69, service charges.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item I, consideration of possible action to approve an... Item I, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending Chapter 18 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, adding the microchip fee for domestic dogs and cats to the services allowed provided by the City of Harlingen related to Chapter 6, animals.
I have a question, just real quick, for, for Mark. Do they need to come in every time they're gonna do something like this? Because I was thinking, like, the golf course, we don't tell them how much to sell their burgers for, or their, the beer, and all that good stuff. Is this necessary?
Well, I mean, if it's, once you put it in the code, once you put it in the schedule, you have to amend the schedule to change it.
But it's not in there now.
I think it is. Didn't we already put it in there?
It is.
Yeah.
Different adoptions. This would be to the general public.
This is microchips to the general public.
Read the ordinance. Let's just do it this way, and let's move along. Please, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to say.
In ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, amending Chapter 18 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, adding the microchip fee for domestic dogs and cats to the services provided by the City of Harlingen as they relate to Chapter 6, animals, providing for publication or in ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Question, is this a cost to the city, or it's a cost to the people adopting the dogs?
So this would be for the general public. So the city pays a cost for the, for the microchips themselves, and then we would pass that cost along. We pay about $7.85 per microchip, and so we're asking to charge $10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item J, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to purchase software for the animal shelter to be able to enter the animal's data during intakes, updates, gather information from microchips, and create reports as needed.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
The initial cost and annual cost?
The initial cost is $900, and there is no reoccurring cost.
How long is that 900 bucks gonna be worth for? Five years, 10 years, 20?
At this point, we've been told there is no reoccurring cost. So it's just the $900 initial cost.
As long as the software keeps working, we're, as long as the software keeps working, we can keep using it.
And there's $2 for adoption?
No, that would, there's two different programs. So there's Shelter Love, which would be $2 per adoption. They require a credit card to be...
We're not buying that one.
Online and submitted. My recommendation is the Pet Point. That one is a flat $900 regardless.
That's what, that's what we're buying.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item K?
Yes.
Consideration and possible action to approve the Animal Rescue Organization application and the Harlingen Animal Shelter Foster Agreement, which will assist in finding homes for animals at the shelter.
This is what we heard about earlier in the presentation. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve, subject to Gabe giving it one final read over.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item M?
Thank you, Shannon.
Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Number 08-14, Section 2A, Penalty Fee for False Alarms.
Is there a motion?
Attachable Release.
We need to read the ordinance first.
Is there...
An ordinance amending ordinance number 200814, Section 2A, relating to false alarm fees charged and changing the fees to $50 each.
What, did I go too fast?
Yeah, no, no, go right ahead.
Three to five false alarms, $75 each for six, seven false alarms, and $100 each for eight or more false alarms, all effective blank 2024, providing for publication and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, on M, just please note my abstention.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief M. Consideration and, consideration and possible action, okay, to approve a request from Remy Garza, Elections Administrator of Cameron County, to use
the Harlingen Culture Arts Center, 57576 Drive, as an early voting site for the May 4th, 2024 general election and special elections on the dates and times listed below. Monday, April 22nd through Friday, April 26th, from 9 to 7:00. Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday, April 29th through Tuesday, April 30th, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Motion to approve. Second.
And just for the record, Commissioner Lopez has abstained from this vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item N, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution of the City of Harlingen suspending the April 4th, 2024 effective date of AEP Texas Inc., requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving cooperation with the city's service by AEP Texas and authorizing intervention in AEP Texas Inc.'s requested rate change, proceeding with the Commission, PUC, hiring Lloyd Gosling attorneys, and appealing required reimbursements of city's rate case expenses, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Motion to approve.
Just to reinforce, Gabe, this is our annual, biannual...
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Dance.
Yes.
Second by...
Commissioner.
Commissioner Betis?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Whoever put the agenda together, let's make this, like, things shorter. Poor, poor Amanda was reading like a Tolkien book.
That'd be Amanda.
Amanda, make them shorter.
Yeah, this one was, unfortunately, that's the way we had to have it because of the PUC, but...
Item O, consideration and possible action to reschedule the city commission meeting of April the 3rd, 2024, to a future date.
May I suggest that we move it to Tuesday, Tuesday before?
Okay.
I'm good.
That's going to be April 2nd, is...
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yeah.
All those, or is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on with item Q, discussion on water and sewer rates discounts for the Harlingen Affordable Housing Customers, PowerPoint made.
Tim is gonna make a presentation on this item.
Unfortunately, you do have to talk to him.
So we, we have an updated presentation, but the only update there really is a redefinition of what the rate comparison is. I think the main issue that we've got here is the request that's been made to consider a discount for affordable housing customers in Harlingen, of which 1,000, 1,002 would potentially be beneficiaries of that plan. I did provide to the city manager, and I believe the commission, some options for that. If you're looking for a recommendation from me, I would suggest considering just a fixed dollar discount. That's very similar to what some other, the three other entities in the valley do, and with regard to veterans and seniors and so forth. Administratively, it's very simple to do. We are looking for guidance from the commission in terms of which version or what level of discount would, the commission would like to consider. And with that, then we can go and recompute the rate plan, whatever that analysis would be. It would be a very minor tweak to what has already been presented and recommended to proceed forward with. I do have some data that was requested. When we're talking about the demographics in affordable housing, they're about 29% of the 1,338 of those total customers who are 65 and older. 2.3% are veterans, and 25% totaling a number of 330 are disabled. So I think the point there that we would make is that there is a cross-section of those demographics that are represented in any potential discount that the commission would want to offer to affordable housing customers.
Tim, just to clarify, when we mention affordable housing customers, we're only talking about those customers that are recipients of Housing Authority subsidies.
That's correct. Whether it be Housing Authority-owned properties or the Section 8 that they provide benefits for.
I have a problem with this, because we're favoring some poor people versus other poor people. And if you're going to treat people, you should treat them equally. And I know that mathematically it would be difficult to prove in the city who's poor and who qualifies, and this is easy to do because they're in public housing. But it's not, you're not treating everybody equally.
So what do you suggest, Commissioner?
I have no suggestion. And I could see people saying, oh, yeah, right, right, right. And the rest of the crowd, what? No, no, no. No, you don't want to pit people against each other.
Well, I think...
And it's a noble idea.
I think it's, it's important for us to, I think that the discussion started, as you mentioned, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't put everybody in a, and call them, you know, poor, poor people, but...
Okay, lower-income people, unpolitically incorrect.
Nonetheless, there, I think that the reason why we proposed the Housing Authority, because it would be easy to identify folks and to confirm that they in fact needed the assistance and the burden that it would place on administration or staff at the Harlingen Water Works. But I know that I'm not the only one on the commission that is concerned. I know you, Commissioner Morales, has, have expressed concerns about rates for people that are on fixed income, as well as, as you have, Commissioner Lopez. I think, you know, we've talked about this in the, in the committee meeting. Everybody wants to help folks, but it's just, how do we, how do we do that in a fair and equitable way? Those numbers I did get also from Hilda, that 65-plus, there's 384 people, there are 32 veterans, and 330 disabled folks.
Would you give me those numbers again, please?
384.
For the 65-year-old?
65 or older, 32 that are veterans, and 330 disabled. So we are touching different, different, as you mentioned. It is something that I, you know, if this commission does not want to move in that direction, that's your prerogative. But remember, at the end of the day, these, this is the most vulnerable population that we have. It's giving them a slight discount. They are still going to see an increase in, in their bill, even on all of them, at some point, some earlier than, than others. It seems like the larger the discount, the big, the more significant impact immediately. But come 2028, 2027, those, those, those years, you're still, there's, everybody's bill is going, is going up. And this just is an effort to help them transition out of housing and not have additional financial burdens. And I think that it would be helpful. There is the concern for others in the community that I share with you, but I welcome ideas on how we would able, we'd be able to, to do that.
I say we move forward. I would rather help some than none at all. So I say we move forward.
I want to clarify a couple of things. First things first, I'm trying to find different avenues to fund what we're looking at. That's my number-one objective.
I know, Commissioner, but this specifically, just so that way we stay on task, this is to, this is just discussion on the water and sewer rate discounts for Harlingen Affordable Housing Customers. I don't know why it's, it's written that way. It shouldn't be written that way. But Housing Authority, right, customers, and potentially any other folks that are similarly situated. I understand your concerns, but that's not why Tim is here, and that's not what's on the, on the agenda. So he's looking for guidance.
Yeah, so what I would, if you don't mind me just jumping in, we already have a committee that's kind of been put together with Commissioner Morales and Commissioner Kinsley. Tim did me a solid last night and got me the other towns that do offer discounts, which is Far Westico Mercedes. Out of the three, Westlico looks the best to me, but please feel free to share this email with the other, with the rest of the commission. I say you two come back to us in two weeks with the recommendation on how to proceed forward, and then we go with it.
So that committee is not for that?
I understand that, but we can expand the purpose of that committee. I know right now you guys are Media Communications, but you guys are the ones working the most closely with Water Works. I think we just expand you guys' scope.
So you want to, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Let me, let me just, before, you need this, so that way you can start working, right?
That's right. The consultant needs the final plan so that we can place that into the ordinance. And, you know, we've talked about a certain schedule, perhaps in April. I think if we're talking about a delay of two weeks, then we're talking more or less a month of deferral of when decisions might be made on the rate plan. So that would be the consequence of, of taking that another step and revisiting that. If the commission had an idea of what discount they might suggest tonight, then we could move forward.
I think we came away the other night pretty much in agreement on the fixed dollar is the option. So it's just a question of determining the dollar amount. I mean, the other two were, this is the easiest, and I think the easiest for everyone to understand, so.
So I think it'd be easier to, because this is not an adoption to say, okay, it's 100%, we're going with $10 or $20. It's just, okay, we, we like the dollar amount, maybe you include other people or other segments of the population, but that is what the guidance is. So that way he can do his town hall and he can, because that's going to be scheduled for next week.
It is.
So we don't, we want to be able to provide some input in terms of, yes, there will be.
We're here to pick the option.
Right.
And I make a motion that we accept the, the fixed dollar discount.
At which dollar amount do we want?
Well, I don't know that we're gonna be able to give you that.
We're at the same place.
No, I do, but I think that...
The reason I like Westlicho's is because it offers, the way Westlico does it is it offers discounts to seniors, veterans, and disabled citizens, right? And I, I think that's a little bit broader. But as I told you, Mayor, and I've told this commission before, I have a lot of people in my district that don't have Section 8 housing, but their houses are so dilapidated, or they're in such financial dire straits, they're a lot, very elderly. It seems to be the, the general consensus that I saw was it was elderly couples that one of their children moved away or whatnot. And so those are the ones I want to really make sure we take care of, which...
Which is why I bring up equality. We can't pick and choose who wins and who, who gets ignored by government. You have to treat everybody the same, even if it's costs, even if it's costly to determine.
So I'm not following. Are you, what you're saying, Commissioner, is you would be, you would agree to provide the discount to senior citizens, veterans, what else?
Disabled.
Disabled?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as everybody in that group is treated equally.
Okay. And so that's something that you have expressed. And so what Tim needs is, if that's the case, does everyone on this commission, or a majority of the commission, feel that we want to provide that discount to the community? Because then Tim has to go back and crunch those numbers and then explain how that impacts the analysis that we discussed at the, at the previous meeting and in this committee meeting, right?
That's correct. If we were to expand it beyond housing, then we have a much larger pool, which then could have bigger impacts on the overall rate plan. And then I, I think there's, we don't, we do not know administratively how you go and you identify veterans, disabled, senior citizens. That's something that can be abused, but then those customers would have to come to us, and then we would have to go through a verification process. For simplicity's sake, if that's, if that's the way you want to look at it, Housing Authority does an extensive process where they look at those metrics in ways that we...
But I think, I think the commissioner's saying is that other cities do it, we can do it also. We can figure out a way to get that done.
We don't know to what effectiveness or to what cost that that entails. We haven't really talked about that in, in earnest, but I think there's implication, implications to doing that that are, that it may not be working well for Westlico, we just don't know. If the commission's desire is that we explore that, then I think, then I think that would be something we would have to talk to them about.
And I think one thing just to consider and keep in mind is that this is not setting the right... the rate.
Correct.
This is just giving you a parameter to use when you go out to your public hearings, because the rate still has to be set by ordinance.
That's correct. And so what we, what we would, the guidance that we would receive tonight, if, if tonight's the night for that, we would implement that into, or we would work out that rate plan, present it, and then that would be the ordinance, that would be the basis of the ordinance that we would consider.
But it can still be tweaked in future meetings, yeah.
The only thing I think is that issue would be an arbitrary number that you would be using, since there's no way for you to know for sure how many folks that you serve are within those different demographics. And so I think that's what's probably challenging at this point, but it seems like, that that is what the commission is asking of you, unless I'm reading, I'm not reading the commission correctly, but that's what it seems like. And just for clarification and for Tim, when you say veterans, is this all veterans or veterans that are, that would fall under the disabled and lower income?
I'm just following based on the three options I was given, Wesleco. The Wesleco also had the thirty-five percent discount, where other ones had like sixty-one percent, others had thirty-two percent. I think that one is a cleaner, straighter shot.
So all veterans? Okay.
The, the challenge for us is we have no data on the number of veteran customers, disabled customers. Seniors is, because age is a metric or some data that I think is collected when a customer comes in. That's easy for us because we have that data in-house. The others are going to be very rough estimates that could be made based off of census data, perhaps, and so the impacts of what that would be on the overall rate plan introduces a lot more variability and uncertainty with what that would be. So we can, we can certainly do that if that's the direction the commission would want to look.
Commissioner?
My, I'm all for the veterans, but I, I think we should help as many people as possible, but my, my concern is just the, the timing. I want to hurry up and get this done. We've been talking this, about this for months and months, and we just need to get this done. But I, I'll go with you guys. Like, I, I like the Housing Authority idea, because I think, I might be the only one here, but I'm the only one, but I grew up in housing, and I know my, my mom, growing up, having to pay the water bill, I know any little bit of help that she could, that she received helped. So I, and I think that's a very good metric to use, but I understand Daniel, I commend Daniel for thinking about the, you know, the veterans and the disabled and the elderly as well, and I want to do that, too. But I, I'm, I'm just worried about the timing, how long this is going to take, and I'm also worried about the practicality of it, of being able to do that, like you said. But I, I'm, the point is, we're going the direction I want, because we're, we're helping, we're helping as many people as we can, so I agree with Mike on that, so I'm all for that, so whatever the consensus is, I'm, I'm for it. As long as we're helping people, I'm down.
I think the easier way to do, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, as long as gathering the data is, as long as we have a means of doing that, I mean, that's, that's the thing, the bottom line. I mean, that's why, the, the housing, it was easy because they already have those stats. Because if we're going to do it citywide, I mean, every time we bring Tim in, we throw a new wrench at him and send him back out from peg one again, and I-
Like Lucy, we just keep taking the football from you every time you're about to kick.
We're here to run the scenarios and like to look at.
So maybe, so maybe what, I mean, a, a solution potentially would be, because we're wanting to do this rather quickly, is to go with the Housing Authority as an initial first step, and he has that information, and we know that we're going to adopt the dollar amount, and then this other initiative to help the others, you know, we talked about different-
I think the, the way I'm looking at it, to kind of go back to what you're saying, is, so, under, in Texas, we have ad valorem tax exemptions for property taxes, and there's three, there's five of them, right? Residence, home state exemption, but the three I think that are applicable to what I said is the senior or disabled exemption, the disabled veterans and surviving spouses and children exemption, and the armed services members and first responders killed in action exemption. I'm fine if we can-
So you said the data is already there?
Because what happens is, I would have to file the exemption with the CAD, with the Cameron County Appraisal District, right? So that's what we could rely on.
There's a lot of veterans that aren't disabled.
Correct, and then those would have to apply, right? Then would, would have to have an application process, hey, show us the paperwork, and you guys, you three would know what paperwork veterans would need to show to say, hey, I'm a veteran or I'm disabled or whatever.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, they've, they've got to have a D-214 or something.
What is it, the DS-260 or, I like Steven that note.
Leave that to your expertise, right?
All those good things. But what I was going to say is that we know that this is going to be the, an initiative, but we give Tim some time to put together how he's going to do that, and maybe that's effective for the next, you know, we talked about having sign-ups, maybe, so if they're going to sign up, maybe that's towards, you know, once a year, or I don't know what that's going to look like, but it's not, the Housing Authority gives him the ability to work with Hilda and say, these are, these are, these are the, the customers that qualify, and so that's just an easy process for them to get started. He can work on those numbers, and then as he gathers that information, then that's something he, we can bring back to the commission on how we're going to, to do that. But at least he can go on Thursday, and, and when you're doing your town hall, say that the commission is entertaining, or not entertaining, but seriously considering and will adopt some measure to provide relief to veterans, to folks that are low-income, that are not in housing, and that are disabled.
Yeah, the senior disabled exemption, disabled veterans and surviving spouses and children exemption, and armed service members and first responders killed in action exemption.
And so that, that, that way of qualifying those folks makes it much easier for us to determine who really is deserving of that. The only, the only part that's more difficult is that the data in terms of how many of those customers would actually be applying and what the impacts that would have on our rates, there's going to be some uncertainty about that, so.
It's not perfect, and I know that disturbs an engineer.
Yeah, I agree with Mike. You have a starting, starting point, I think, or from there. Please.
So I would-
Sorry, my wife's trying to teach me to say please.
I would still like to have an indication of the dollar discount, and it, would it be the commission's desire more broadly for disabled seniors and veterans to receive that same discount or some other discount? Because we can, we can do work based off of the indication on Housing Authority, and when we come back to talk about the first ordinance, we can present that alternative or that additional component where you're looking at those other three demographics. But it's, it's really difficult to put in a rate plan, to calculate a rate plan if you don't know what target of discount you would want. So is tonight that night, or?
I said twenty-five percent. Whatever the dollar is, twenty-five percent of the base, the base fees are-
And would that still be, if you consume less than five thousand gallons per month?
The way, the way we would recommend it regardless of your consumption, that would be what we would look at as the discount. You, the consultant has given us a five thousand, and there's really almost an infinite number of increments there, but I think the way to implement that would be just, regardless of consumption, you would, you would implement a fixed discount dollar amount, and then we would portion that between water and sewer funds, and that would be, that would be easy enough to proceed with.
I, I just want to verify, like, I just have a question. And this, say they, you get this discount, like, say veterans or anything like that, this would only be for residential, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
There, well, there are, there is one entity on that list of three that somehow does that for commercial, but I think that's a much more complicated.
Yeah, yeah, residential.
People to stay in their homes, right? But I do, I think, well, I'm going to follow my own rules because I'm going to go off topic, so I'm not going to do that. So we'll talk about it later. Did we, what it, I think what I heard here was twenty-five or thirty percent.
Twenty-five or thirty, I'd say.
But what that dollar amount, the equivalent of a twenty-five or thirty percent discount and that dollar amount.
Standard dollar.
Twenty-five or thirty. I said percent, he said twenty-five dollars.
And I, what I, what I thought I heard from the two of you is that you said twenty-five to thirty percent, but what is that in a dollar amount, right? Because we want to use a dollar figure.
I said twenty-five, I just thrown in them. Twenty-five percent of the base charges, which are the standard charges, right? So whatever the dollar amount we have as our base charges, it would be twenty-five percent of that.
So if you want to consider twenty-five percent on the total bill, using five thousand gallons as a reference, that would translate to, drum roll, please.
Can we say twenty-five percent? I think, see, twenty-five dollars?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars.
The twenty-five percent on the total bill would be about twenty dollars when the rate plan is fully implemented.
I, I would still go to twenty-five dollars.
I'm fine with four.
More than twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five dollars? There you go.
We will work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Is that okay with everybody? All right. Amanda?
Good morning. R.
Was there a motion or no?
No, it's just a discussion.
No motion. Okay. So then, moving on to item R, discussion and first reading of ordinance amending Harlingen City Code, Article VII, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities.
When did we receive this?
Two days, sir.
Today.
There was one in the, Commissioner, there was one in the packet, but there's some revisions, kind of work in progress, it's fifty-two pages. So you just got that today.
That's not enough time for me to read this, as a speed reader.
No, I know, I was going to, that's the first thing I was going to say, is it's not enough time for you to read it. It's, it's fifty-three pages long. What, what we're did is we, we, this is a, basically the idea was to put, to amend City Code to provide for one uniform place where you could have all the, all the rules regarding appointment, membership, removal, and duties for all committees in one place. So what I wanted to do is place it on the agenda, give you the opportunity to look at it, invite your comments, and bring it back to, for another, for our first reading at the next meeting, actually. No, I totally realize there's no way you can vote on a forty, fifty-two page.
Do you want recommended changes to come to you? I have a few.
There's a bunch in the-
And so this- I mean, how do you, how do you want to handle that, or?
You could send them directly to me, however you want to do it. Some of the changes-
I mean, a lot of them are just pen changes.
Sure.
But there's something that, I know there's some, some cut-and-paste one on in this and so on, and-
Sure.
Like, there's, there's a few here that I think got cut and pasted in the wrong areas or something.
Yeah, I know, I made the changes in the most recent one.
Okay. And, and-
One that says if I'm on the golf advisory board and my wife has owned a business in town.
I read that.
That was an interesting one.
A lot of it was worded like, if your wife, if your wife owns property, or if your wife is a resident-
Yeah, some of those were cut and pasted from other parts of City Code, so.
Yeah. I know I'm all about, you know, women empowerment, but in these boards, it's like, if you only, you have to have a wife and she has to own a business.
That's what that one was. Man, Tashi, you got to go out and buy a shopping cart here.
But my only question is, is this the final one for us to look at?
You can, you can look at that and invite your comments from that.
From this package.
But I'll, I'll take any comments you have.
And I will just say that there are some boards on here that honestly I didn't know existed.
I didn't either.
And so we got to look at that, whether that's something that the commission wants, and then there's some on there that are no longer in operation that I would suggest that you look at, because I think it's a corporation. What is that, Housing Finance?
Yes, it's a corporation.
Yeah, so that one needs to be looked at, because I think it's a corporation to dissolve that, because half of the members are passed away.
And I, I didn't come up with that stuff, that was already in the code.
Correct, correct.
We can look at, at those boards with Mark and make a recommendation on which ones to dissolve.
I think because of the breadth of this and how, I think it's going to take more than one meeting to do this.
Yes.
I would recommend that maybe at our next meeting, staff just makes a recommendation, all we're looking at is which boards we're going to cut. And that's all we do, is which boards we're going to cut. Then we cut those, and then from there, then we start, we, we break up this elephant one bite at a time rather than-
I think that's great.
No time, a little bit on this, right?
Correct, there's no time. The whole concept was just to organize and clean it up and put it all together.
Yeah, we can do that.
One, one thing, Robert, on that Harlingen Finance Corporation?
Yeah, we just talked about that one.
Yes, does that have any money in the bank?
No.
No, I don't think so. Well, let's just verify.
Yeah, and which is what Mark will do, and he'll get with, with Robert and make, and that's why, that's the only reason that I pointed that one out, because like Harlingen, keep Harlingen beautiful, there, you can't just, you know, say, I don't want it tomorrow, there, there's steps you have to take, and definitely if there's money in it. But I think that's why they, from the, when I, we did have a meeting with all the chairs of the boards, you know, a while back, but-
That one was not there.
Yes, but we discussed it, and I think I asked at that time if there was any money, and I was told no, I think by Josh, right? So, but we can definitely confirm.
All right.
Okay, and so-
We would need to table this.
Yeah, we just table, I'll take a motion to table this and bring it back next meeting just to discuss which boards are being recommended to keep and which boards are to dissolve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is discussion and possible action to approve a resolution, authorizing city staff to proceed with a filing, Article VII, incorporation of a nonprofit animal welfare corporation to support the Harlingen Animal Shelter.
And so I did have Mark kind of help me and work on this, but I did realize I looked at, at the resolution. I don't know that it's ready just yet, I think we need to kind of flesh out some things, but just so that, and we can potentially bring it back along with the other ordinances that we talked about. But what this, what we are trying to do here is, we do have people going to the Harlingen Animal Shelter, and they want it, and they're great, wanting to donate and provide assistance, and I want to make sure that there is a way to, to account for that, those funds, and for fundraising component for the shelter specifically. And so this would not be an organization that would operate the shelter, city staff, under the direction of Shannon and Jasmine, and would, would continue the operation. This is strictly so that way when a, a resident wants to come in and provide, write a check to the shelter, it would go through the nonprofit, and they would have a treasurer and an accounting, and then they would be able to be, provide that information, be transparent, to say, okay, this is where this money went, and there'd be an accounting of that, and ideally we'd like that to be online, so that way the citizens of Harlingen are able to see where that money is going. And I did ask Mark to see, we have a similar organization from the library, friends of the library, I wanted to see how, how they got started, maybe we can kind of follow whatever procedure they did. Unclear, I think that we would want the commission to appoint those members, and we talked about that, and maybe we want that in the resolution, if there are terms, criteria, those kinds of things. So welcome suggestions from the commission, maybe shoot those over to Mark also, if you have an idea on, on how to make that better. But that's what that's about, but I don't think the way that it is, is ready yet. But are there any questions?
And I think that would have to be in the Articles of Incorporation also. Actually, Mayor, you could, you could technically support the resolution, and then all these things that you're talking about can be just part of the Articles of Incorporation and part of the bylaws, not actually put in the resolution.
Okay, I mean, I follow your lead. Okay.
I think it's best that when we vote on it, we kind of go in with our eyes wide open, and we just, everyone shoots you our thoughts and concerns, and then when we come back next meeting, everyone kind of knows exactly where everything's going.
So you're going to table this?
Yeah, motion on table.
Did you have something?
No, no, no.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Next item, Board Appointments.
Okay, we'll start with-
I have none.
For the Charter Review Committee, I'm going to appoint Michael Garza for the Museum Advisory Board, I'm going to appoint Daniel Vidal.
None.
For the Tax Reimbursement Reinvestment Board, I'll have Raoul Flores take over for Robert Rodriguez.
That's for one, two, and three, Commissioner, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner?
None.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twelve, Executive Session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive Session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor.